Welcome to the first Auburn Planning Commission meeting of January, January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. I call meeting order. Uh, as a reminder, if you don't mind, uh, please muting your microphones, uh, when you're ready to speak, just go ahead and speak if you're a panelist. Amber, can you give us a roll call, please?
All right, Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Jenna Jaeger.
Here.
Mac Lazenby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Yeah.
Bob Brighton Ball.
Here.
All right, before we get started, especially since we have a quite a few attendees here tonight, um, I want to go over some of the the basic rules of how we proceed here. Uh, the commission's going to be presented with agenda items by the planning department. And then the representative, the authorized representative for the agenda item will also, after that's been presented, have a chance to speak if they would like to. Um, and and answer maybe a couple, some questions before we, uh, open a public hearing if it's appropriate. Uh, some, some things do require public, most require a public hearing, some do not. Um, and that's going to be the public's, uh, opportunity to address the commission about an agenda item at hand. Want everyone to be heard, and I ask that you keep your time to talk to five minutes, and please, uh, keep your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, and address any of the, uh, questions that any of the public might have brought up during the hearing. Uh, so I'll ask the representatives and or the staff to answer those questions. Uh, then I'll open the floor for commissions to discuss, uh, the item. I have a, uh, motion and a vote. The commission's going to vote based on our local and state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan twenty thirty, and for the general good of the community. But we, we also, I would also like to talk a little bit about some, the subdivision, uh, our, our responsibility with subdivision, uh, plats and in the items that are going to be on our agenda, because we do have a few of those tonight. And, um, so by Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for all subdivision plats. With regard to subdivision plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have previously adopted. While public hearings are required for each plat, and we do welcome any and all public con, uh, you know, comments about these, uh, please understand that it, that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds very specific requirements codified in laws and the regulations that I previously described. Uh, and since we are still on Zoom, uh, the way we'll do the public hearings is that when we, when I do open the, the public hearing, uh, the people that would like to speak, there's a, uh, way to raise your hand electronically. And so what I'd ask you to do when you, when you want to say something during the public hearing is raise your hand. Then I will turn on your microphone, uh, the ability for you to use your microphone, and then you'll have to unmute, and then you can talk. We'll, we'll, you know, guide you through that if that turns into any combination. Um, okay, so the first item on our agenda is, uh, citizens' communication. Now, this is a time where anybody can speak on, uh, there's two categories of things that that are, can be addressed during citizen communication, something that is not on our agenda at all. So you can speak on that for up to five minutes. Or, uh, and or you could speak on something, uh, that is on the consent agenda. So at this time, I'd like to open citizens' communication, and would anybody like to speak on an item not on the agenda or that's on the consent agenda? Please raise your hand electronically if you would like to. All right, I am seeing no one. Okay, so we'll move along. Uh, there's no old business. Uh, tonight, we have a consent agenda that is consists of nine different um, items plus the, uh, minutes of the packet meeting on December seventh and the regular meeting on December tenth. Um, and I'll just, for the record, uh, quickly go through the items that are on the agenda. Waller Annexation, uh, PL twenty twenty zero zero seven one two, Bridle Creek Estates, twenty twenty zero zero, uh, that's seven zero two. The first one was, uh, uh, Waller Annexation was twenty twenty zero zero seven one two. My, my mistake. Item number three, Donahue Ridge, a final plat, twenty twenty zero zero seven zero three. Uh, item four, Camden West Phase Two, uh, PL twenty twenty zero zero seven zero four. That's also a final plat. Farmville Lakes Amenities Lot is zero zero seven zero six. Number six is Corbett Subdivision Phase Two Bond Extension, zero zero seven zero eight. Tuscany Hills Phase Five B Bond Extension. Uh, items, that's item number seven, which is PL twenty twenty zero zero seven oh nine. Uh, item number eight, Parker Place Townhomes Bond Extension, PL twenty twenty seven, or PL twenty twenty zero zero seven one zero. And finally, Longleaf Crossing Phase Four Bond Extensions, PL twenty twenty one zero 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 one. That is the consent agenda. Any comments from the staff?
No, sir, no additional comments.
Hey, look for a, any discussion or motion from them?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved, we, uh, through the nine items on the consent agenda, plus the minutes of the packing medium of December the seventh and the regular medium December the tenth.
A second, Matt.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those in favor, uh, not in favor, say no. Motion carries. All the consent agenda carries passed. Okay. Now we're over to new business. The first item on the new business agenda is item number ten, Hamilton Place PDD Amendment. PL twenty twenty zero zero six nine four. This is a recommendation to City Council, uh, to, uh, basically adjust the Hamilton Place P Plan Development District. And Mr. Kip, please.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a, uh, one of two requests related to this property. Um, you, you've seen this before previously in your August twenty twenty meeting. Um, the property owner is PSM Holdings LLC and TD Development Incorporated. Their authorized representative is Brett Bascon of Forsight Group. And essentially, the request is to amend an existing plan development district known as Hamilton Place Shopping Center um, to add for approximately four point two one acres to the existing, uh, shopping center of which, um, this is the existing shopping center. It's approximately eleven point seven seven acres and consists of a little under eighty five thousand square feet of retail grocery and gas station. The proposal is to incorporate, again, this four point two one acres, which consists of, uh, thirty three thousand square feet of office uses. This, uh, the previous request that you heard, um, all right, to kind of go back a little bit, the, the Planning Commission, in the first iteration of this, recommended approval and staff recommended denial of both, uh, the Plan Development District Amendment and the conditional use. Um, at City Council, it was also denied, and then in your, at your December twenty twenty meeting, um, a rehang was requested and granted based on a substantial change, uh, to the, uh, circumstances of the property. Um, so here's the proposal as it's presented tonight. Um, staff is not changing the recommendation. We are recommending denial, um, based off of a, uh, inconsistency with the complaint recommendation of cluster residential. Um, happy to answer any questions, and Brett Bascon is on the line. Uh, we did receive a few phone, phone calls, um, in opposition to, in opposition to this proposal. And like I said, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bascon, do you like to say anything?
Yeah, um, you know, we previously came through, and I think we, uh, had, uh, seven one approval through Planning Commission. Uh, when it went to council, it got denied. It was our understanding that their concern was, uh, uh, access and and the access drive, not having an aligned access with Bent Brook. Um, the proposed city street we currently have shown meets the city requirements for spacing for a city street. Um, and, um, we do feel that the office is a good step down used from a shopping center down to, uh, you know, residential, uh, past this. So, um, be happy to answer any questions. Um, and, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, this requires a public hearing, so what I will do at this point in time is open the public hearing for anybody that would like to speak on this. You have a five minutes time limit. Um, and I see, uh, Mister or Mrs. Choi, don't, uh, you can go ahead and speak. You have to unmute your microphone now, though.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I live in, um, Mims, uh, Brookshire Court. And, um, I got a mail from home of our Auburn, city of Auburn about regarding this issue. Um, and in my personal opinion, I would like to, uh, request, if you guys were planning, are planning to, you know, build a new house, then, um, if it's possible to build in certain, you know, distance, because if you guys are building right next to my house, there's going to be noise, sound, dust, and everything. And when I first country, uh, made a contract with the, uh, on this house, I heard that, uh, there will be no any new development, uh, around my house. So, and also, yes, um, that's pretty much it. So I am in personal, uh, um, disagree with this, uh, building a new infrastructure, uh, new infrastructure, um, I mean, the new houses. That's it for me.
Okay, can you, uh, just, I, I didn't hear if you stated your name and address. We need your name and address.
My name is, uh, Sangdei Choi.
Okay.
And I live in two oh four Brookshire Court, Auburn, Alabama, three six eight three two.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, um, Phil, I believe Mr. Choi's comments were related to the Mims preliminary plat.
Oh, yeah, it, I didn't quite understand the, uh, where he was located, and that wasn't near this property. All right, I'll, um, we'll ask him to speak again later on. Or we can, can we, I don't know, can we, um, use those comments as, well, we'll just wait till we get down to that item. Okay, let's see, Mr. Greenaw. Go ahead and unmute your mic, and you can speak. If you're there, we can't hear you.
Second, let me try again.
There you go, there you go, we got you.
Okay. This is Robert Greenlaw, two four eight six Glen Brook Drive in Bent Brook Subdivision. And I would like to question the validity of the redo on this zoning request in that we followed the procedure all the way through, and it was denied at the City Council. And I'm not quite sure why this is being allowed to be re represented again, uh, with the changes. I see the street change, but I, it doesn't affect, it doesn't, to me, seem to improve if there, if the reason that was done is because of the traffic problem that this would create. I see not much difference. In fact, uh, the way I'm looking at it, it would be a, uh, not a good thing to come out of our subdivision and have a slightly angled offshoot on the other side. Looks like to me that would cause a lot of traffic confusion. And I still, it's still an office park. It's just rearranged. The building, uh, arrangement has been, uh, redone. And I understand those changes, but that, to me, um, I never, you know, this was not part of any discussion that we had on all the previous meetings that we've had, just to put in a street. And it, there's a street going in there. It's, it's just down, you know, a few feet of behind Publix, and that we were told initially that that's all that would be, uh, used to get into this office property. So I'm just not clear on how really we're looking at, uh, something different that would be any better than, uh, based on the reasons for the denial. If that, this would be any better than anything else that that we've seen so far. So I'm definitely, uh, asking, uh, the, uh, Planning Commission to deny this, uh, I, I don't know why it was, it was approved before and went to the City Council against the, uh, recommendation of the city planners who, uh, looked at the proposal early on. So, uh, it went on, and it was denied at the City Council. I don't understand why now, soon thereafter, we're looking at, uh, approving, you're having to go through approval again on this with just a, basically, a street change, adding a street. I don't know how that's going to help the city anyway. So, uh, I please ask that you reconsider, uh, this again in light of the fact that it's basically the same proposal. And please deny this for our neighborhood, for all the reasons that we've been through over the months that we've been looking at this proposal. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thanks, sir. Are there others? Okay, um, Mr. Forthofer, you should be able to unmute and talk now.
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'll be brief this evening. Uh, I, I too.
Can I have your, can I have your name and address, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Uh, it's Gregory Forthofer, two five four seven Lambrook Drive, Auburn, Alabama, three six eight three zero.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll be brief. Um, the, uh, the same reasons in opposition I had before, to me, uh, apply still today. I had safety concerns uh, associated with, um, the traffic load that commercial has as opposed to the permitted use of residential. And, um, even though it looks like you're splitting hairs, really, the streets are not aligned. Um, I know that was something that came up, uh, last time when it went to City Council, and my understanding too, from a traffic standpoint, is that a traffic study has not been done. So if this is the main, if moving this driveway slash street is the main reason, this is being reheard. Uh, my understanding is a traffic study has not been submitted to the city. Um, and then the, the second concern I have was with the commercial use with this converting from a neighborhood shopping center to a commercial, um, shopping center allowing up to five hundred thousand square feet of development in the future. So, uh, don't really need to go any, anything else more, um, than what was said in the previous months. Uh, so I please, uh, I would ask you to please, uh, deny this, uh, per the city staff and, uh, City Council. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Uh, and just, uh, quickly for, for those of you that addressed it, you know, this is being heard this soon after we, you know, we approved it not too long ago, and then it went to the City Council who, uh, did not approve it. But the fact that it was, um, we viewed it in our last, the last meeting as a substantial change compared to what was the, what the original, uh, you know, design looked like. And so due to our bylaws and how we, we, uh, have, we see some of these, as we get the items to come before us, when there is a substantial change, we will see those, uh, you know, fairly quickly after the change comes in. Otherwise, they could resubmit the same exact, um, design, you know, they have a year, twelve, have to wait twelve months to, uh, submit it again. So it's just basically, we're seeing again because the, the rules are set up that way that allow us to do that. Now, having said that, uh, let me ask a quick question, um, on the traffic study. Uh, is, is, uh, Ms. Frazier there, or somebody from engineering is?
Yeah.
Give me a status of the traffic study on this, because we talked about it before, but I don't recall what was going on now.
An updated traffic study has not been done with this conditional use request, or I mean, this rezoning request. One was done with a prior request, um, but it's not uncommon to not have a traffic study.
And should, should it, um, should it be approved? Would that be a requirement as we get farther down the line towards, uh, development and building that there would have to be one done?
Yeah, well, they're essentially doing the same square footage of, of office space. Uh, so the traffic study may have to be amended to look at the change in access if this is approved by the City Council. But we can do that as part of the development review process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll open it up to the commissioners for questions, comments, motion, or any of the above.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
I do see here, under the staff comments, under the engineering section, there is, um, some discussion from the planning department about the proposed street, um, that has the roundabout and then the new curb, the new cut out onto Morse Mill that is proposed to be a public street as opposed to a private street that's part of the development. And that that's very unusual, um, for that request to be made, um, and that that's really not a policy of the city to have a public roadway inside a private development like that. Um, so I'm hoping maybe Allison can talk a little bit about that and why it's requested to be, um, a public street as opposed to a private drive. Please, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So as I understand, the request for a public street is, um, so that, um, I, I think it was outcome of the discussion at City Council. So the applicant revised the plan to, to show the public street. Um, it is a typical or a little bit unusual, yes, because in most private or single lot developments, uh, like the one directly adjacent to it, streets, parking, and in most cases, utilities are privately owned and maintained. This proposed street is offset, and Mr. Bascon mentioned it initially, is to meet our curb cut spacing. The difference in this being a public and private street, if it were a private street, it would not meet our curb cut spacing the way it's drawn, or if it were aligned with Bent Brook Drive. So making it a public street changes the curb cut spacing requirements.
What's the curb scut, curb cut spacing for the private, uh, access? Isn't it lo, much larger? This is like a hundred.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred.
Yes, and in this case, and, and the distance from a public street to the first curb cut, that distance is a hundred and twenty five feet.
Did you say three hundred feet?
Yes.
Where would that put that curb cut? It was a private.
Way out there.
I mean, I just.
I think it's actually four hundred feet. Morse Mill is an arterial, that forty five miles, so it's four hundred feet. Um, so it would put it too close. It, it would have to move to the east. But it might put it too close to the existing curb cut that Logan is pointing to on the screen.
What is that curb cut for down there?
It's a single family residence.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be off the property, right? Wouldn't even still be on the property. Oh, I can't, sorry, Logan, I couldn't see.
Oh, four hundred feet is going to be right towards the edge of the property line.
It'll be right about here.
So the, i- if this was approved, the city would have to maintain all of that, because that would have to be a public. The only way that curb cut could go there, which is, you know, that is, otherwise, it's going to be way down the road if it's private. If it's public, then the city has to pay for the maintenance and upkeep of all that, uh, of that, right, that driveway into that property, right?
Correct.
So does the city maintain, like, if you go down the, to the left, they're down towards, uh, Publix, and there's a couple of curb cuts there. I mean, that's all private access, right? That's not city maintained property on those curb cuts, or is it?
No, the city does not maintain those.
And normally, they wouldn't.
Correct.
And is this a, this also appears to be, um, I'm kind, I, I, I kind of have an issue with this being a safety, you know, potential safety hazard too with that offset uh, of that entrance with the, um, what is it, Bent, the Bent Brook Drive? What is, um, are there some kind of engineering design sort of, uh, requirements that would suggest that that is not a standard way to do business? Sorry about that.
This, this plan meets the spacing requirements, and we would definitely have to look at the access. One of the comments that we made was if this roadway or driveway is offset from Bent Brook, uh, the left turn lane that's required into that development will block the entrance to Bent Brook. So it's just something, if you, if you see fit to approve this, we'll have to look much closer at it. If the City Council approves it, we'll have to definitely look much closer at it to make sure it's safe.
Allison, Allison, is there, is there a reason, just out of curiosity sake, why the spacing between the curb cuts can be a lot less? Uh, if you're talking about a public drive versus, uh, a private one? Like, is there, was there rationale behind that, or is that just kind of, kind of how it shook out in the manual, and so now they're kind of like an easy conundrum? I'm just trying to wrap my head around that, how that happened.
Uh, that predated me, honestly. It's been that way, um, but I think it's more of an access management and how curb cuts function. Roadways and curb cuts function very similarly. But yeah, that, that rule predated me.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lazenby.
Are we, uh, have we combined item ten and eleven on, on the agenda, or did I, did I miss ten completely?
No, we're, we're working on, uh, ten right now. This is just the amend, let's see.
PDD amendment. Yeah, this is just the PDD amendment.
Right.
And here's my question, I guess. I, I re, I remember vividly, I guess, the night that we spoke with all of the HOA people, as well as development team on this, and at the time, everyone thought a direct across the street curb cut would be better. This is still not a direct across the street curb cut and requires left turn and right turn into it. How far off of alignment is this across the street from Bent Brook?
It's somewhere between eighteen and twenty four feet offset.
So one or two cars?
Uh, we use about twenty feet for a car, so about a car. Uh, we use about twenty feet for a car, so about a car length.
Okay.
To the least, yes.
Okay. So that's who would, like, there would potentially, if I'm envisioning this, like, the left turn lane that would be required, there would be a car literally sitting in front of people turning right or left out of Bent Brook to get into this new development.
The way it's drawn, yes.
Okay.
Phil, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This project coming back presents me with a difficult dilemma. But before I get into, to that, let me mention, I think the reason to answer your question of why there's a difference in curb cuts or a public street is, is to, for a private curb cut, and that is, I think, to allow the public, the city, who's working in, on behalf of the public to create public good, to have some flexibility under rare circumstances in order to uh provide the connectivity or safety that the city feels it can design. Uh, whereas in private sector, it's merely to allow for the convenience perhaps of the, of the land developer. But what my dilemma is, is that I see no problem with the use, and I did not see that at the last time, in terms of being a nice step down uh from dense commercial to residential, particularly since we, we have, and you look at this plan, right adjacent to this is also a very large church, which has an impact out there. And I didn't have any problem with the traffic generation. If that is, these numbers are correct, fifty-eight AM trips generated by this project and forty uh PM trips is not a significant addition to the traffic load in that particular area. However, what I am concerned about and makes this project far less uh appealing to me, or far less uh approvable to me, is the fact that we have a new curb cut as opposed to utilizing a curb cut just a few feet to the west of it. That is not heavily used at, at this time. That was one of the things that made me feel like I could approve this, vote to approve this project. So here I am, uh, having no problem with the use, but I cannot approve this design or vote to approve this design for me. But uh, it's uh, the first time, I think, was a reasonable project, but the city council did not think so. So it is their, we are advisory to them, and it is their decision to make.
I actually agree with you one hundred percent, Warren.
Me too.
Well, it sounds like a motion. Is that a motion?
I can make, I can make that a motion if, if all the discussion is over. I do not want to, to cut a discussion short. But uh, if, I will make uh the motion if it's appropriate uh that the Hamilton Place PDD amendment uh be denied as proposed.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions on this motion?
The motion is for denial, just for.
Yes, ma'am. Motion's for denial. Okay, uh, Amber, can you give us a roll call on this one?
Bridges?
No, wait, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, denied.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries that amendment, PDD amendment is denied. Uh, so the next case, I guess for process, uh, we'll have to address or is that um, yeah, I guess we can still, let's see, let me look at this, yeah.
The applicant still has the opportunity to take the case to city council, so you can still move forward with the condition.
Okay, so we'll, we'll carry on with. So this is um, item number eleven, Hamilton Place Office and Community Shopping Center. And so this is a um recommendation for a, a, it's a conditional use recommendation, approval for conditional use for community shopping center. Um, and it is PL twenty twenty zero zero six nine five. Mr. Kip?
Yes, sir. Uh, same property owner information and representative. Um, the request, just to clarify a little bit, it's a, the company's, the PDD amendment that was um, that you recommended for denial. Um, this request is specifically regarding the site plan, um, as well as train, changing the classification of the overall development from a neighborhood shopping center to a community shopping center. Um, the subject, uh, the existing shopping center, as I mentioned, is currently at um approximately eighty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-seven square feet. It cannot exceed one hundred thousand square feet. Um, so should the uh office use be approved, they also need to be up, you know, reclassed overall to a community shopping center, which allows up to uh four hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. Um, so we just wanted to caveat that, that if approved, um, the requested square footage is more or less one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred eighty-seven square feet and not to exceed that amount without a separate approval. Hopefully, that, that makes sense to everybody. Um, uh, staff, no. Uh, staff again recommends denial for the same reasons given previously inconsistency with the comp plan. Um, happy to answer any questions uh about the site plan or anything else. And here is that proposed site plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bassman, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, no, I was trying to catch in there and uh before the previous vote. Um, because, I mean, what, what's, I guess what you don't understand, or what, what you may not understand is i- if denied and, and the only permitted use is single family, uh, if it's single family, the proposed city street's gonna be right where it's being proposed right now. And I think per previous comments from uh Ms. Frazier, uh, she indicated that the single family would probably produce more peak hour trips than what the uh commercial uh was going to create. So essentially, but, but, I factored that, and that's what I was trying to get to at that point, but.
Well, that, that's not before us, so, I mean, that would have to be a, a separate item that would have to be submitted that we would be able to debate and discuss, so at this point.
Yeah, but you'd be able to do that permitted by right, and as long as you're meeting the subdivision requirements of the city, there's really not much debate that can take place, but.
That's right.
No, no further comment on this.
Okay. Okay, um.
I need a point of clarification, please, before.
Sure.
I, I need to understand how we can or cannot vote on this current item if the PDD amendment to include the four point two one acres was just denied.
The applicant still can choose to move forward to the council.
With, with um, but not without that proposed street though, right? Or I guess it's still gonna go to the council anyway. They'll have to a- affirm this.
Correct.
Okay, but you mentioned that the site plan was part of this approval. This item number eleven.
Correct. The site plan shown, shown here carries with the conditional use. So the, I, I guess that would be to say if you approve the conditional use, but recommend denial for the PDE, I can, you know, it could go either way that, that your, your, your recommendation on this alone is independent from the PDD amendment. Even though if the PDD amendment is denied, this can't go forward as an, as a office use.
Okay, I do, I do want to reiterate that I didn't have an issue. I'm with Warren on the fact that I didn't have an issue with the use. I do not like the public street or the fact that it's not aligned, so therefore I'm, I'm struggling right now, so that's why I asked that, so I appreciate it.
Hey, non, and I think a good way to look at it is there are times that this body and the councils approved the zoning and not the conditional use as well, so I mean, I know this is a uh cart before the horse situation, and I think it's challenging even for the public to understand because the council's the final authority. Um, and that's what Katie and Logan are saying. Ultimately, you're a recommending authority, so um, I, I think there's also, and I'd like Katie and Logan to speak to this, just concern of if you were, if you a- approve the conditional use, does that mean you're de facto approving anything with the zoning? I think Logan was very clear that it's independent. Um, but they may have more to add to that, but yeah, that, they are independent approvals of one another. At the council level, they are not. The zoning comes first, the zoning doesn't pass, the conditional use cannot move forward. Um, but it's the applicant's discretion if they move it forward to the council.
But we have the zoning now. I mean, the zoning was changed to LDD, right?
But not a PDD. So you do have a base zone, yes, that's not rural.
All right, I, I have a question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, or I guess, hear, hear it again, just so I'm sure that if we approve the use, we are inherently approving this site plan.
No, site plan.
Is that what Logan said?
Correct.
But we are approving, are we not, the expansion of this shopping center, the existing shopping center by the acreage included in this proposal here. Is that correct?
That's true.
Well, since the.
Including the site plan.
Including the site plan?
Since the PDD amendment was recommended for denial, the office use would only be allowed in a com- community shopping center
Right.
land use. So that is independent, well, that is dependent on the PDD approval. Because office uses are not allowed at all in LDD unless they are in a neighborhood shopping center. Everything is conditional in a PDD.
Well, my point, I guess, is, and I have no problem, I don't think, with this, if I understand, is to the, approve the addition to the current shopping center, this property would be incorporated into that shopping center based on uh the condition use approval of community shopping center, the third, uh. And so the develop, they could develop the expanded shopping center with commercial uses that are allowed in the, in the community shopping center, is that correct? Without having to come back.
That is not correct. So that, that's kind of why I made the comment there. It probably muddied the waters more than it helped, but I wanted to make the comment that, just to be very clear, that what they're requesting is not to expand anything else other than the thirty-three thousand office into the overall shopping center. Whereas previously, in the previous request, they had, I think it was twenty-five thousand square feet of additional retail. That is not the case this round.
And if we approve that, it, I wanna make sure, we just denied the site, that current, the site plan that you're looking at right now, we just denied that.
Thank you.
You denied the master development plan.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to make between item ten and eleven. We've got them, now, gotten very convoluted, but item number ten, request was denied. Could be overturned by city council, and if it's overturned by city council, the question's gonna be, what did the planning commission do with item number eleven? And we need to address that. That's the item we're on now, and.
Yeah. Yes, I need, I, I think we do need to address it. What I'm trying to figure out is how to understand it. So.
But the street network would, would have been part of the PDD amendment.
The proposed street?
Correct.
Okay.
So site plan approval is, or conditional use approval is based on the use. And
Right.
if there's any items that you would like to condition, you could, in this case, you could make a condition that the street, if you're not wanting the street in that location, you know, to reconfigure it.
Okay, but, so what I think we're doing, if we approve this particular uh request, condition use approval for community shopping center, we're merely approving the expansion of the shopping center, not any, not necessarily this adjacent property, but they will have the approval to expand the shopping center square footage, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
But the site plan is attached currently to this item.
Correct, and I think our incoming city manager made very clear in packet meeting that we could not change anything on this conditional use. It's like it is, or it to be denied. And I thought it was very helpful.
This is, look at this as a concept plan with a conditional use request, with a use that you're voting for. So there could be several changes that would need to be made to the concept plan when it got to the development review team.
Also with the subdivision regulations, Katie, is that.
That's correct, yes.
So it's twofold, that this is just independent standalone, when you're looking at a site plan, you're not approving public streets and locations, you only do that in subdivision actions. Only with the PDD, as the staff has explained, it did the street track with the PDD amendment. Otherwise, site plans, you're approving use, not, not exactly everything, use and square footage um in general layouts, but things get adjusted per our regulations later.
So merely what is before us is the request to expand a community shopping center or expand to this, a community shopping center, from a neighborhood shopping center to a community shopping center, and whatever future uses in there would have to come back in with an amendment to the the plan. Is that correct?
Correct. I, I would just say, if anyone is, is to make a motion in support of it, just to state that very clearly, um, that any additional square footage would have to be office as, as shown, or, or something like that, if, if there is a desire to approve or recommend approval.
Now I'm uh wondering how um, if, if, if that's proposed street is not part of our, I mean, part of, the, part of the last item we just talked about, I'm not sure why it sub, uh, it made a substantial change and it was brought back to us. I mean, it's all about the use, right? And you're just saying there's no, it doesn't matter, you know, the street, the street doesn't matter, it's the use.
Well, the street was also shown on the previous case, on the previous item. The PDD amendment.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking about the, you know, I'm going back a little bit and saying now, okay, so we, we're seeing this same item again. It just had a, a new proposed street put in there with a new curb cut. The last one we saw and we approved just didn't have that street. It was the access from the, from Publix. So now you're telling me that that doesn't really matter, and that, you know, so I, I wonder why we are addressing it again.
Well, for me, I do not mind adding thirty-three thousand square feet to the existing shopping center. What I was opposed to was additional curb cut at that particular location and a proposed street that the city would be required to maintain. So if, if, if we, if this proposal is merely to expand the shopping center by thirty-three thousand square feet, then I can vote for it. You see, I, I don't want to say no on one thing and then turn around and say yes to the same thing in a, in a different way. Katie, do you understand where I'm, what I'm?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with you, Warren.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so. Okay.
So let me ask then, um, what was the, so the fact that we denied the previous item. So let me ask then, what was the, so the fact that we denied the previous item, what is the outcome of that? What's the result of that? What's going to happen? I mean, what happens now with that?
The applicant could proceed to council, and you're just making a recommendation of denial.
Right.
And council would be the approving body.
Or they could just not do that, and then they could do some certain things by right.
In LDD, yes, that's correct.
Can I just talk to the whole, the commission as a whole, and just ask, are we sort of in consensus that our, our understanding of our denial of the PDD was based on the site plan that is before us? And our concern about the private, I mean, the public street and the additional curb cuts? I mean, that was my concern, and I feel like that's all of our concerns.
Yes, I agree.
We were also told, however, that because this is a rehearing with a substantial change, that we do not have really the authority to ask for a previous iteration or another-
That's true.
Another option as opposed to what is presented to us.
Yeah, we're not here to redesign things.
Not my confusion, but this is where my conflict is coming in, is if we have to deny based on the plan in front of us on the PDD side, I'm not sure why we don't have to consider the site plan to approve the use. Because the use is not permitted if the PDD is not expanded. I mean, you have to have a PDD to get office use. It's not permitted in LDD.
Correct.
Yes.
And change it to a new type of shopping center.
Correct. I mean, even that's, I mean, even that's irrelevant, that's just based on the size of the
Right.
shopping center. But if we've denied, if the PDD is denied, the office use is not permitted in the current setting. So I think that's where all of our, I mean, for me, I feel like that's where there are confusion.
Well, I think if we're, I mean, because we are just, we're advisory body, and so I think just the fact that the things that we're saying are on the record, because I will also reiterate what others have said. My vote for denial was not because it didn't meet with the comp plan. I agree with what Warren said, I think that that wasn't the issue. The issue was some of the comments in the engineering section, which made me vote for denial. So I think just the fact that we're voicing this way, if the applicant does decide to take this up, then hopefully, you know, our concerns will be clear that way. We still have this particular issue, I understand, so we-
Let me help my memory here. Did we see this, did we deal with the approval of a community shopping center? Last meeting when we approved, or the meeting when we approved the use for the offices there?
You did not.
It was mentioned in the meeting.
It was mentioned in the meeting, but we did not take action on it.
That is correct.
So since we didn't take action on it, if the city council had approved the office use, then they still couldn't have done it without coming back through with this then, right?
I think the understanding was that it was a more of a de facto upgrading of the type of shopping center without actually changing the shopping center, if that makes sense. Changing the class of the shopping center, but not allowing any more spare footage than the office.
Okay.
In this case, we wanted to ask for the community shopping center, just to be perfectly clear that the use was the category, yeah, the category of the shopping center was changing. But again, they're not asking for any more retail.
Nor are they asking for, including in this, they are asking for the 33,000 square feet of office use.
Yes.
And that's what trips the reclassification of the shopping center.
Okay, so if we approve this proposal, this increase in the shopping center, reclassification shopping center, it includes the 33,000 square feet of office space, so in effect, then the offices can be built without having the proposed street and so on, and we, and the offices are still there, right? In other words, what we denied can still be done without the site plan.
It cannot be done without the PDD.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about, that's what's before us now, is the PDD.
No, that, we just denied the PDD.
Oh, okay, P, all right.
That's where, that's where our conflict's coming.
So if we, if we change the classification of the shopping center without increasing the size, we've just seemed like we've done an interesting little academic exercise that is, doesn't amount to anything. Right? Or can they, because there's no other place for them to go.
Well, let me ask it a different way, maybe. So if you, if we approve the change in designation of the shopping center, does that now allow office uses?
No, only the PDD could allow an office use in a shopping center like this.
Well, then that sounds like an interesting academic exercise.
I think the question that we're really asking is, if we approve the conditional use, are we implying that we approve of this particular site plan? And if the council approves the PDD and conditional use, is this site plan what they are approving too, or is there an opportunity for it to be changed? And I don't know the answer to that question.
Let me, Brett's got something he wants to say, let me ask him to chime in. Go ahead, Brett.
Yes, my question is, is I understand the dilemma you guys are talking about, but I guess is if, if can you, if the concern is the public street, and because this is separate from the PDD, can you approve it conditioned on not having a public street?
That was going to be one of my questions.
Because, because, because this is a conditional use, you can put conditions on a conditional use.
Well, we-
How you voted on the PDD, but that kind of just reiterates the point, I think, I think you all are struggling with it.
Yeah, that was my question to staff.
Well, one of my concerns, one of my concerns is we're communicating our recommendation to the city council, and I want us to send it in a way that they will understand that we understand what we're doing. And my point is, I have no problem with reclassifying that shopping center, particularly if it would encompass, allow them to encompass this acreage right behind them. They would still have to come in, again, with a PDD amendment for the shopping center to say what they're going to do back there, is that correct? Anybody?
If they expand beyond that 117,787 square feet, yes, they would have to come back and ask for either a different use, or more spare footage, or, and amend the PDD.
Even if we approve the conditional use?
Yeah, because this piece of property is not currently in the existing PDD.
That's right. Right.
For them to do offices at all, council will have to-
Right. Also, what we're doing-
If we don't-
Go ahead, Robin.
If we don't have a, if we don't have a problem with the use, let's just set aside, let's just set aside the PDD. For this standalone item number 11, if we don't have a problem with the use as a body, and we vote on that, but we do have a problem with the street, so we add a condition that it can't be a public street, then it would move forward to the council, and whatever they decide to do with the PDD amendment, they would then have our recommendation as to what to do with this use. Right?
So what you're saying then is that, we'll save the use, we increase the size of the shopping center, making a condition that they put this-
Site plan aside.
A site, they put this site plan in it without the proposed street.
I would personally propose that, yes, use, okay, community shopping center, but omit current site plan submitted with this item.
I agree.
Either way, it's the same, yes, it achieves the same thing, is what I was trying to-
Well-
The council will address whether or not they decide to do the PDD, which then allows for the space, period.
Right.
And so we've passed that part, so now we're just on this. So if they do that, and then they get to this item, then they know that we have said we're okay with the use, we're not okay with the site plan.
Yeah, because we-
Is that right? I just want to make sure I'm-
And we approved it before, you know?
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
That sounds like a reasonable way to approach it, I think. Does that sound like a motion then?
I'm happy to make that motion if we are through with the discussion. Or Nonna would prefer to do that if she wants-
Well, actually, you know what, I haven't opened the public hearing yet, so let's do that real quick.
Oh, jeez.
I know. We got so carried away. Okay, I am now going to open the public hearing for item number 11, PL 2020 00695. The public hearing is open, please raise your hand electronically if you would like to speak. Bob Greenaw, go ahead, sir, unmute your mic and we'll, go ahead. You've got to unmute, there you go.
Yeah, it was covered up with some other screen.
Okay.
Okay, I found it. Folks, I respect every one of you people, and I'm amazed how much insight you have when you ask your questions about these things. And I can see how you've talked into a conundrum here. But if you believe that the average guy, that's me, out here in hinterland can understand what you just went through with this discussion, there is no way I could accept, you know, in a, I don't know, in any way. Because I don't understand about 95% of what was just done, and I can't sit in my home and watch this happen and get approval for something that is not even, I can't even see it. What I'm looking at, I can see the proposed street and the rearranged offices. I can't see anything beyond that, either you approve that or you don't. Now, I know that you've got ways of dealing with this that I don't understand, obviously. I will not be a happy camper if I go away from tonight's meeting with this situation. As I think you've arrived, but I, maybe I don't understand, well, obviously I don't. I just, this conversation is simply too convoluted for me to follow. And I'll end my conversation there, but I would simply not be happy about the way this has been done. And I know that's my problem, but just for your own records.
Yeah, it's okay, because it's confusing to us sometimes, too, that's a fact.
I can see that you're still confused, some of you. And how you could vote yes on anything that's this confusing, wouldn't matter what it is. How could you pass through something like you just talked through is beyond me. But I still respect you and I love you all, but I hope you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
Hey, sir, real quick, can you, just for the record, give your name and address again?
Again? Bob Greenaw, 2486 Glenbrook Drive.
All right, all right, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay, back to where we were, so I guess we were kind of on the verge of a motion. Are you going to give a stab, Robin?
Absolutely. Why not? No risk, no reward. I would move, I would move to approve PL 2020 00695 with the condition that this site plan is not used. Does that work?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and so we're going to say, so make sure on the motion that yes would be approval of this office and community shopping center designation.
But no to the current attached site plan.
Right.
Site plan.
Just to clarify, that is approval of the community shopping center not to exceed 170, you know, whatever the square footage is of office space. Correct. Just so that we understand that the only expansion of the community shopping center is to accommodate office use.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay, so I had a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Glasby.
Yeah, I really wish we would have taken up item 10 and 11 a lot differently. And we may want to consider going back and changing our vote on item 10, because I think item 10 is doing what we really want to do now, because the request was to amend the plan development district to add the 4.21 acres to allow for 33,000 square feet of office. And I don't think anybody disagrees with that area being an office area, and that's specifically what item 10 was about, and we denied it. And item number 11 is totally about a conditional use based on the drawing you see here, which does not meet our engineering standards in several areas. So I don't think, Robin, you did a very, very good job with your, with the motion, but I think that motion is contradictory to what we did in item number 10. And we may want to go-
I agree completely, but I agree 100%, but I thought that ship sailed.
Mac, Katie can explain again the nuances with the plan development district and what a street and basic road network layout, and what that means and approval of that versus what you're actually approving in a site plan, which you're not approving the site plan, you're approving the conditional use, the use of the property with certain conditions. And I think Katie and Logan can go back over that to be very clear that one of the nuances of the plan development district is street layout. Katie, Logan?
That is correct. So when the MDP is before you, you are approving, or you're recommending approval for the street layout, the land use category, and the maximum square footage that you're wanting to allow for each use, or each category of uses. In this case, in this case, it's a shopping center and office uses.
You're speaking of the PDD right now.
That is correct.
So that does include provisions for that street?
The street network, that's correct.
And we said we didn't like that, and that's why we denied it?
Correct.
Okay. I'm good with that. I think that's what we intended. All right, so we're still with the motion and a second. Mac, did you have any further discussion on that, or?
No, thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Amber, can you give a roll call, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes. Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
No.
Birmingham?
Okay, so that motion carries. Alright, let's see, we're on to number twelve, Apollo rezoning. From Comprehensive Development District Industrial, PL 2020 00697, Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, good evening. This rezoning request comes to you from the Auburn Industrial Development Board. For a site located at fifteen seventy-one West Sanford Avenue. Site is currently in CDD, which is the Comprehensive Development District, and the request is to rezone. Five point six one acres to the industrial district, which is. Adjacent to the property as you can see here. The subject property wishing to be rezoned is. Lot four A of the Shu Jordan Commercial Park subdivision. And this lot was originally zoned industrial. But was rezoned in a large rezoning for this entire commercial park to CDD. And that was for the Water Works Board, that is to the southeast of this property. That was more fitting of a light industrial use, which is permitted in CDD. Industrial Board is wishing to rezone this section to industrial. And for the following case that you'll see up next, and I feel that it is more fitting. For the uses to the north rather than that light industrial use to the southeast. Here's an aerial of the property. Here you can see the Water Works Board. This is the Alabama Power headquarters and pole yard and the Auburn City Schools bus yard. Staff is recommending approval for this rezoning request, and we have received no communication. From residents or citizens regarding this.
Alright, thank you. I see Mr. Seepman, are you, have anything to say about that, as being the authorized representative?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for taking my call. Yes, we appreciate you taking this on for consideration of approval. As you see, this is related to an industrial project, following on the agenda, a very desirable project. And we agree with the staff review for the rezoning, and we appreciate your consideration for approval. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak on this? Please raise your hand electronically, and I will turn on your microphone. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And ask for questions, comments, or emotions from the commission.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item twelve on the agenda.
A motion in a second, Amber. Roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. On to item number thirteen, which is related. This is Apollo conditional use. PL 2020 00705, Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, as I stated before, this is a conditional use request for the same property that was just rezoned. Recommended for approval to be rezoned from CDD to industrial. Anything, any use for industrial has to come through conditional use, thus this is before you tonight. The request is for approval for a data center. Site plan you can see here, it is a twenty-four hour, proposed to be a twenty-four hour facility. Thus needing the industrial zoning. However, the largest employee shift is roughly to be about five. At a time, so certainly adequate and a. Not intensive change for that roadway or other businesses around. We received no communication for this as well, and staff is recommending approval with comments. From our departments.
Alright, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing as well, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody would like to speak on this item? Please raise your electronic hand. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask questions, comments, motion from the commission.
Okay, recommend approval of the Apollo conditional use, item oh seven oh five.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Amber?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, on to item number fourteen. This is PL 2020 00699 Chapel Heights Preliminary Platte. Mr. Howell?
Good evening, everybody. This application is for a, as you said, a preliminary platte request for a thirty lot. Conservation subdivision that consists of twenty-seven residential lots and three open space lots. It's located at seventeen hundred block of Pierce Chapel Road in the Rural Zoning District. This is on the, kind of on the extreme southeast corner of town. Should look familiar to you. This was brought to you last month for the rezoning request. For the Conservation Overlay District to be applied. You recommended approval for that rezoning. And that will then now is about to go to city council next week on the nineteenth for final approval. Or the overlay district. And so this submission. Is in line with that presumption of approval. And therefore is, can this, this application is contingent on that approval.
And that's supposed to happen in the next city council meeting, right?
That's correct. It's at the nineteen, it's on the agenda for the nineteenth.
Okay.
Here's the subdivision layout. It's consistent with the concept plan that was submitted as part of the rezoning application. The proposed gross density of the development is point three three dwelling units per acre. Which means that it meets the three acre lot minimum. For the entire development. As a result of the Conservation Overlay District. They are able to consolidate the development into at least, no more than fifty percent of the site. In order that the remaining fifty percent of the site stays as undeveloped open space. In this particular case, they have eighty-one total acres, of which forty-four and a half. Are designated as open space, which equals to fifty-five percent of the, the total requirement. Street layouts, based on subdivision rates of the city of Auburn, require that subdivisions provide for continuation connection. Between adjacent properties, so both planning and engineering are, are, or have a comment in the staff report. To connect both to the west and to the south. Subject to city council's approval on Tuesday, staff recommends approval as well. We have received some comment from neighbors along, along Lee Road. Along Lee Road twenty-seven, which is in the county, primarily asking for information. We've also received, reached, some questions from a neighbor located at seventeen eighty-eight Pierce Chapel. In the northwest corner of this, of the platte that's shown here. It's not part of this subdivision, but it is a joining neighbor. And they were generally in opposition to the, to the request. From what I understand, I believe they're on the line, so they might be able to speak to it as well. From the standpoint of preferring not to have the development so close to them. Pending your questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, Mr. Bassman?
Yeah, I would just, I would, I would like to, you know, the staff comments we're okay with. Except for, you know, we're asking for, to provide connectivity to the west and to the south. And I, I understand the parcel to the west is inside the optimal boundary. But it's, but it's still in the county. It's not been annexed in, it's only a seventy acre parcel. And I can understand how that's within the optimal boundary. And city kind of has somewhat a future control there, and there's a stub. But my concern is the stub to the south, the parcel to the south is outside the optimal boundary. That's in the county. And, and if, and, and just so you know, I brought the property into the south for annexation. Two or three years ago, and I got denied because it's outside of the optimal boundary. So if that area is outside the optimal boundary, how am I supposed to protect my neighborhood from adjacent county property? That, you know, anything goes over there through my subdivision. I mean. It's, it's, it doesn't make much sense to me when that property does have access to Tara Lane. The, to the west there. And so, you know, I think that I'm, we're okay with accommodating. Access to the west, to the seventy acre parcel that's within the optimal boundary, but still in the county. But we would request for the requirement of the stub to the south. Be removed, since that property to the south is outside the optimal boundary, has been denied for annexation. And will remain in the county for the foreseeable future. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alright, okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, and Mr. Choi, I guess you're back to. Speak on this particular item, which is what you're interested in. Get the unmute. There you go.
Okay. Hi, nice to meet you.
Again, nice to meet you, too.
Yeah.
I'll give your name and, can you give your name and address, please?
Okay, my, I'm sorry about that. I'm, I'm, I'm helping the translator, somebody choice is in the restroom right now, so. He, he'll be right here, right, right back. Hold a second. He will come soon, so hold a second.
Well, I got somebody else that would like to speak, so I'm going to go with her first, and when he gets back, we'll work on that. Ms. Peters. Go ahead and unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, so my name's Nicolette Peters, I'm here with my husband Rusty Peters. We.
Address, please?
Seventeen eighty-eight Pierce Chapel Road, we're that neighboring. Residents that Mr. Howell was discussing. We basically moved out here for the peace and quiet that we, we have, living so close out to the county. Our concern is, you know, this access road right off Lee Road forty-seven, right off Pierce Chapel, you know. Basically parallels our property, and we're, we're very concerned of the traffic it's going to bring and the street noise. Also, every time we, we seem to hear about this, at first it was twenty-seven residents, and then. Twenty-seven lots, and then just heard thirty concerning that it's just even more is going to be added when we're. Overall, just pretty concerned of the property, all these properties just being so close to ours. Basically just voicing our opinion. I know not much of it really, I don't know how much of it really matters, but. Just concerned that it's going to interrupt the peacefulness, which is why we moved out here.
Phil, if I could clarify real fast, the thirty lots includes three open space lots. So the total number of homes would still equal twenty-seven.
And where were those three open, what, what's the purpose and where would those be? Of those three open?
Go back one slide.
Well, here, look, okay.
The majority of the open space is located in the, the east of the, east of the property, along where there's a significant amount of floodplain. And creek buffers, and so that will be in the large area. You have the, the two, two different streets there, Chapel Heights Court. And the one that's going to be coming adjacent to the, to your property, the open space is located in a large. Non-lotted area to the right.
Okay, just on the other side of the road?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, like I said, it's just, it's, you know, street noise and, and I guess. Is our main, is our big concern.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, seeing no one, I'm going to close the hearing. And ask for questions, comments, et cetera, from the commission.
Did Mr. Chow get back in that public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, we missed somebody. Let me go back, I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm, I'm a, forgotten Mr. Choi, so I need to, thank you, Mac. I, I will reopen the public hearing for Mr. Choi, who was already to participate earlier, but was waiting on a.
Was he waiting on this or mils?
He's waiting on, waiting on mils, on the next item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll close that public hearing again. Okay, let's, let's, so now we're on questions, comments, or emotion on PL. Twenty twenty zero zero six nine nine. Chapel Hill Preliminary Platte.
Can I get a little bit of clarification on the two access points, or is there only going to be one?
I guess that's part of what the representative was asking about, but yeah, that'd be good.
I need a little clarification on that.
There's just the one.
So he, so which one? The one on Pierce Chapel? I thought we were talking about another one to the south. But that's not part of the comments, is it?
The lot, the, the development does have three different portions that have right-of-way frontage. Only one of them will be used for access. The one in the southeast portion that has that curve towards the, towards the county road. Does provide access to that area of, area of land that back there. However, there will be no road, street network that ties through that.
Okay, and then what, Mr. Bassman mentioned something about a, a southern stub out to a piece of property that. Was not annexed because it was outside the optimal boundary.
Logan's mouses on the cul-de-sac on the farthest extent south. Planning comments and engineering comments were specific to extending that cul-de-sac down to the boundary of the property.
So that's part of the engineering comments currently?
That's correct.
Okay, I see.
Having maybe like a stub out right there is, is what the planning department?
Yes.
Recommending.
So if we approve with all comments, it's going to require that stub out to the south?
And the west.
And the west, yes.
And the west, but the west is covered, right? With that funky, that little, the curved road down there.
West is left, west is that, to the left.
Excuse me. The other west, the other west.
The other west, yeah.
Okay.
Will that eliminate additional lots that can be built? I guess, is that the concern of the developer?
Uh, will that eliminate additional lots that can be built? I guess is that the concern of the developer?
Here, let me uh, go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily know that the concern is that. I mean, the biggest concern is, is somebody could put a, a uh, a uh.
Nuclear power plant.
Yeah, I mean, there's no control. It's outside of the, it's outside of the, out of the optimal boundary and the city's already denied an annexation. So I mean, somebody could, for lack of a better, you know, use, could build a Dollar General or a, a nuclear power plant or a, uh, you know, uh, a, a, a metal factory, uh, recycling center that everybody be driving through this subdivision to get to back there because it's not within the city, uh, not within the city.
And is that the property just to the south?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the property to the west, there would be no objection to?
Correct. Yeah, we'll, we'll do to the west. That's fine. Our, our concern is to the south.
Okay, and that, and that property is confirmed that it's outside of the optimal boundary? For the city?
That's correct.
Anyone on the staff? Okay.
So the property to the south is still in the planning jurisdiction. It is outside of the optimal boundary, but it's still within, in the PJ. So should that property come in for a subdivision, we would have to review that subdivision plat.
And it is not annexed into the city of Auburn, correct?
That is correct.
It was denied annexation because it was outside of the optimal boundary.
What about the property to the west? Is it?
That's in the, that's in the optimal boundary.
Is it in the city limits?
It is not.
So neither one of those properties are in the city limits?
Right.
Well, can you get back to the?
I guess this neighborhood is not either.
It's rural.
See, Bill Terrace got you. If you look at, if you look at uh, the Bill Terrace subdivision, they provided their stub out to the south.
Okay.
Is that property not part of the optimal boundary either? That's south of uh, Tara Lane?
The optimal boundary.
Off the top of my head.
The optimal boundary follows the line, uh, the, the southern boundary of Tara Lane that connects to the subject property of this request. That is also the boundary of the optimal boundary.
Okay.
It does not extend further south or east of this.
Okay.
But that is still within our planning jurisdiction?
Right.
Yes.
But Tara also does not connect to the east and we're requesting this one to connect to the west.
And they're good with that.
Right. Okay. I'll make a motion if everyone's ready.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve P L twenty twenty oh oh six nine nine with all staff comments.
And that's subject to the city council approval?
No. Mrs. Sub, this is subdivision plat, right?
No, it is contingent on next Tuesday's city council meeting.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry for that because of the uh,
Rezone.
Rezone with the rezoning.
I'm sorry, in contingent on city council approval of P L twenty twenty oh oh six four three.
Targeted motion.
And you said with all staff comments?
Yes, with all staff comments and city council approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, Amber, please have a roll call.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is number fifteen. Mem's Trail subdivision eleventh edition phase A revised preliminary plat, P L twenty twenty zero zero seven one one. Mr. Kip.
This is a property owned by Clayton Properties Group Incorporated. Their authorized representative is Grant McCallum of Perristow Homes. Um, it's a revised preliminary plat approval request for a fifty-five lot performance subdivision of which fifty-three lots are residential and two lots are for open space. Here is the uh, I guess the last time you saw this was in October of twenty twenty and it was recommended for approval. This was the robot or the original preliminary plat. And this is the revised preliminary plat that is before you tonight. Um, it's essentially the same number of uh, buildable lots, just with a change in the configuration of the street layout. Um, staff recommends approval and there are no um, major concerns with the request um, at staff level and I did not receive any uh, correspondence. Have to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does not look like we have a representative doing. Um, Mr. McCallum?
Hello?
Okay, oh, Mr. Bassman. Mr. Bassman, is that, is this uh?
Yeah, yeah, I'm the representative. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, uh, we.
So, Mr. Um, Mr. Choi. If you unmute your mic, uh, we can hear you if you would like to make some comments.
Phil, I don't think you opened the public hearing.
Oh, I will open the public hearing now. So uh, if you, if you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand and I see Mr. Choi. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, you know, previ- uh, previously, you know, uh, we, I already explained.
Can you give us your name and address? I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, Song Bichoy and uh, to address is two oh four Brookshire Seat, Seat Court, Auburn, Alabama, three six eight three two.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh. Sorry, uh, about, you know, previously I already explained that, you know, about this development plan, uh, where I, I'm not, I was not, I would not agree. Uh, because uh, a current, when we look at the, you know, the map, uh, currently this is, uh, that area is little dan- little dangerous for the, you know, with, due to the no, about noise, concern about the noise, dust and traffic. And also it's very risky for the, for our, our children and kids, for the, uh, when they walk around there.
Okay, and that's uh, and you're on Brook?
Brookshire.
Brookshire, okay, I see you. Uh, I see where you're at, okay. All right.
I'm sorry, and sorry about that. Currently, uh, I, I, I have to go out. I, I have to go, so. Uh, just, just trying, just trying to explain, uh, we, I'm not agree about this development plan and that's why I'm want to explain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, people leave, uh, any question?
Well, we don't have question. This is a hearing, so you, you, you tell us what you're interested in, your comments and concerns are and uh, we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
Yep. Thank you, yeah. Uh, thanks for help and bye.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Uh, let's see, uh, Ms. Velma Reese Parks. Go ahead and um, when, just now, go ahead and uh, unmute your mic. Are you there?
Hi, this is Ralph Harrison. I'm the grandson of Velma Reese. I have her beside me and
Okay.
Her main question, well, starting with the address, the address is thirty-three fifty-three Mill Creek Road, Auburn, Alabama, three six eight three two.
Okay, thank you.
And her main question was in regards to how far over into the Mill Creek on the land that her and her si- her siblings own, how far was that gonna be stretching?
Uh, let's see, can we get a map that might help that out? Is that, is that the only question that you have there?
Yes, I think um, this wouldn't necessarily be the format for the next question because we are open to possibly selling. Um, we've been discussing it, but uh, if need be, I know I've received emails on behalf of my grandmother from Greg Nelson, so if uh, if further information is possible to send through email, then that would be fine. If not, um, whatever answers you may have pertain to that as well.
Yeah, we can't help you with any kind of sales or anything like that, so um, that'll have to be something you'll have to do on your own, but we can definitely uh, try and answer the question of how far this, you know, what, what is the extent of this property? Which may, you know, uh, is there, do we have something? Is that, was, were those your only two questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. Thank you. Let me make sure there's nobody else. Uh, anybody else would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close this public hearing. And can we uh, show a map that might be able to help them out a little bit?
So this is, this is their property?
Okay, and it's in the city, right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
It's rural, got it?
And essentially the, you know, the proposed development is entirely on, on this piece of property. Um, their property would be over here.
Go, go back to that ne- last one. Now, Mem's is a quite a large pro- is that all of their property going farther, all the hatch area?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So that's just further growth, okay, because it's big P D D, as I recall.
Yeah, this is the final section of Mem's that's remaining south of the mansion.
Okay, now go back to that uh, two, one more. Okay, uh, yeah, right there. Okay, so I guess if um, Ms. Ms. Reese Parks, if you can just kinda see this map, the, the hatched black and white lines is this property we're talking about now. And so the, and it'll only extend to the, the whole development will extend eventually to the west or the east, excuse me, at some point in time, so it's not really gonna get any closer to your property except for that one little common boundary line. Right, right about right there where that arrow is, so that's, that's the only that's what you have there. Okay, so now I'm uh, back to questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to prove item fifteen, staff comments.
Motion in a second, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
And motion carries on to item number sixteen, Piper Glen subdivision, P L twenty twenty-one zero 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 five, and this is a preliminary plat. Mr. Howell?
Yes, this uh, this particular application is a revised preliminary plat requesting the subdivision of a sixty-five lot performance single-family subdivision in the R D D zoning district. It'll consist of sixty-two residential lots and three open space lots. It's located at the terminus of Judd Avenue in the uh, uh, northwest side of town within uh, the Chug Jordan perimeter. You have uh, D D H surrounding it on three sides and you have the, this space of uh, one layer of lots between it and the, the parkway there. All right, next slide. This was the original uh, plat and you can see it, it has a, it connects from Judd with the street network down to Dunford Avenue in the south with a uh, circle in the center and it also includes a cul-de-sac separated up on the north side where it connects to Alberta. Uh, Alberta Road. If you'll go one more slide. This is the revised. It is sixty-two lots and has a little bit more open space than the, than the first and the road network is slightly more uh, or is laid out a little bit differently. In total, the comparison of the two includes a seventy-three lot, seventy-three homes from the original to sixty-two lots in the revised. The density goes down from three point one dwelling units acre in the original to three point two dwelling units acre in the second. Open space also in, upper space also enlarges to, from twenty-six percent of the development to thirty-six percent of the development. R D D requirements are twenty percent of open space for the entire development. The road network, a lot, uh, the road network does shift somewhat like we mentioned. Um, the cul-de-sac, uh, that is not, the cul-de-sac that it continues north, but uh, the one right there where Logan's Mouse is, uh, does come down a little bit uh, to compensate for a lot of the drainage issues that are, um, that are part of the development side itself, which also which also results in additional open space. And then lastly, there's four additional lots, um, that were added to the south as a result of a land purchase that the developer did that are bringing this into the, into the subdivision. Make sure I get my notes here. The reason why this is a revised is that the original subdivision was presented to you in February of twenty nineteen and preliminary plats were only good for eighteen months. And so because that had expired, they're seeking preliminary approval again. We received a lot of feed, a lot of, uh, a lot of questions and comments from the neighboring area, uh, particularly around um, uh, Dunford Avenue as well as on Bird Street. The, some of them, uh, some of the comments were concerns about traffic on the uh, on the street network around it. The adjoining property owners at five oh one Bird and six six eight Alberta, uh, were concerned about drainage. And at least with Alberta, we, I had the, excuse you, with Alberta, I had the opportunity to explain uh, some of the, some of the measures that were being taken as part of the, as part of the, the construction. During the time between the prelimin- the last preliminary plat and this one, um, as you, as you know, developers, once they have a preliminary plat, they can submit engineering drawings and uh, go through D R T and they have already done that and pursued, they have begun clearing the land. Uh, there is one single lot that is under development as a, uh, is what city refers to as a lot of record development at the, near the entrance of Judd Avenue. That for recommending approval? Pending your questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have a representative here? Says Mike Mayer, but I don't see them.
Yes, we do.
Is that Thomas Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, let me uh, Emmy, okay, Mr. Johnson, you can unmute. You have any comments?
Hey, good afternoon. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, Mr. Howell laid this out pretty well. Uh, the preliminary plat was approved. Um, the original design was a little ambitious, so we've reduced that, the lot count, as Mr. Howell said, based on um, existing topography to be more conducive to meeting drainage regulations. Um, so that, that, that's why you see this reduction. Um, I heard his comment about the, the traffic concerns. Um, a traffic study was performed as part of the D R T review. Um, a few recommendations were made that we've already handled at the intersection of Richland and Chug Jordan. Um, so as Mr. Howell said, this is currently under development. Uh, much of the utilities have been installed. Um, subgrade for the road is prepared. Um, so we're, we're well underway of construction, but did not hit, excuse me, did not hit that eighteen month timeline from original approval to final, so that, that's why this is on, on your docket again, but um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the project and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to address them as well.
All right, okay, thank you much. Okay, I'm gonna open the public. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your electronic hand, and I will open your mic- microphone. I see Deborah Gentry. Go ahead and unmute, and you should be able to speak, Ms. Gentry.
I was just clicking on that. Um, how long do, how, how long do you think you, it's, before you finish this?
Excuse me, can you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Deborah Gentry.
Okay.
My address is six-six-eight Alberta Street. Auburn, Alabama. Three-six-eight, three-two.
Okay, thank you. And uh, so you hit, your, your question is how long until it builds out? Is that what you said?
Yes, about how long before this subdivision is gonna be finished?
Okay, we'll, we'll uh, we'll ask that of the builder here in a minute, so you have any other questions? That's your only question?
How many two, three, four bedrooms are gonna be in this subdivision? Cuz we have two properties on Alberta Street that are rental. They're like fairly small, maybe seven hundred, eight hundred square feet. And I'm just kinda wondering, because everything beyond that is more of a, a permanent residence, cuz everybody was pretty much in homeownership, except for those two.
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, we'll clear that up uh, as well. Any other questions?
And TJ, I know you're on there. The sidewalk, I notice, is kinda halfway. Are you gonna bring this sidewalk all the way down in front of my house, too?
Okay. All right. If you have a, a number of questions, we'll take the questions down, and after we get done with the public hearing, we'll uh, make sure they're all cleared up.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, anybody else like to speak? Okay, I have Byron and Burnett Tolbert. Go ahead and unmute your microphone, and then uh, tell us what's on your mind.
Hear me?
Yes, ma'am, can now.
Okay, my name is Burnett. I'm sitting by me is my husband Byron. We live on twelve forty-one Dunford Avenue, Auburn, three-six-eight, three-two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have several questions. I had called the city just to ask the difference. What it means from a performance zoning versus traditional zoning.
Okay.
And that's one question. My second question would be, how would this zoning affect our land value? And would it be higher traffic in our area, because we have a small road where this new subdivision is, is gonna butt against, and it's just, it's a two-lane. And it's no um, traffic lights or anything, no sidewalks, and I do a lot of walking in the neighborhood. So I just wanna make sure that when this new subdivision come into place, that I will be safe walking in my neighborhood. Also, um, I heard that there was a traffic study already done for this area.
Right.
I just wanna hear a little bit about that traffic study, what was found.
Okay.
And also, um, let's see, we were always concerned about, like I said, sidewalks in our area. I don't know whether this new subdivision will have their own sidewalks, and then we won't have any sidewalks, I'm not sure. So I just wanted to, the city to address that as well. And I think that's the only questions I have. I'm gonna let my husband speak and see if he have any.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tolbert.
Uh, uh, good evening. Um, only concern I have is uh, basically the traffic, and um, yeah, that's basically, I have traffic concerns.
Okay. All right, is that all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
No problem. Anybody else? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and let's answer some of those questions, um. There looks like there's a couple of different things, but let me ask the city staff first. Um, performance versus traditional, um, I guess this is Jay's um, item, you, can you explain the, the main difference to them on uh, what's the difference between performance, uh, like a performance subdivision versus a traditional subdivision is?
Totally. Uh, so we, the city has two different kinds of single-family development. One is performance and one is conventional. Conventional lots are your ten, your standard, uh, what you would normally think of as uh, as a regular suburban style of single-family. Performance lots are designed to um, increase the buildable area of a lot. As well as, in exchange for that, create mandatory open space within the development. Um, so there's, it's a little bit of exchange, and it does allow for, um, it does allow for an increased, a, a certain amount of increased density depending on the zoning district.
So you have a development that it's either traditionally be just houses, or if it's a performance group uh, area, then you'll have houses plus some open space that maybe you could walk around in and see the birds and all that kinda stuff.
General, this isn't a rule of thumb, but generally, the, the lots themselves are a little bit smaller than you would normally see in the conventional sub, in a, in a conventional subdivision. Um, and uh, and that, and therefore, that ala- that allows us a, a in, a moderate increase in um, in density, and like I said, that changes, the, the percentage of that changes depending on the zoning dis- zoning district.
Okay, um, and then uh, let's see, um, Mr. Johnson, you're still on there, speaking, unmute your mic. How about uh, giving us a little more information on the traffic study that was performed, because, you know, obviously with this much growth, it's gonna take a traffic study, and then I, I guess they found certain things for you to improve?
Yes, sir, I don't, uh, appreciate the opportunity. Um, I don't proclaim to be a traffic expert, but this study essentially found that the majority of the trips uh, will use Judd um, to quickly access Richland, to quickly access Chug Jordan. Um, that's right, extending west from the project. Um, so the recommendation and uh, the uh, consensus we came to, you know, working with uh, Ms. Ezell and Ms. Frazier with the city as well, is to re-stripe one of the turn lanes there, um, where Richland intersects, that's exactly right. And do some signal work um, as well. And so that was included as part of the recommendation by the third-party traffic engineer, agreed upon with the staff, and then performed. Um, so the majority of the trips should access Judd, and then again, quickly Richland, and those that do head south to Dunford uh, would make a right turn out of our subdivision to also quickly access Richland Road. Um, so that, that's the, the extent, I guess, that I can speak intelligently on the traffic study.
All right, uh, what about in your particular development? How are the, what, what are the, what's the sidewalk situation?
Yes, sir, so uh, per, per requirement, and then going through DRT review, we do have sidewalks along all of our proposed streets. Um, we are also, as part of the development, extending sidewalk network um, from our development all the way west along Judd out to Richland Road. Um, so not along Dunford, I'm sorry, Logan, there you go. Yeah, along Judd, along the south um, side of Judd, all the way out to um, Richland Road, that's right, and also um, circling back to Mrs. Gentry's question on the east side of Alberta Street to connect, um, you know, our smaller cul-de-sac to the new development. So that, that, Ms. Gentry, that will be extended. We, we put that other one in, we had some um, some concerns of, of that neighbor and some traffic issues anyway, to, we went ahead and installed theirs in front of their property to get them a driveway turnout, uh, but we will absolutely extend that in front of yours as well, Ms. Gentry, all the way to that new cul-de-sac.
Okay, and then just one more uh, thing on the sidewalks, and this is kinda directed at uh, city engineer, Ms. Frazier. Can you just uh, generally talk about, there is a city sidewalk plan, isn't there? Is there any plans at this point that deal with this particular area?
We have future plans to extend sidewalk down the remainder of Richland Road to Martin Luther King. Um, that's in our long-range plan, but we don't have at this time any plans for Dunford.
Okay. Okay, that sounds great. Um, now, uh, for the commission, questions, comments, or motion?
Would, would it be uh, appropriate that I address the rest of Ms. Gentry's questions at this time?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you had other ones, go ahead.
Yeah, of course, sorry, I just, I, first off, Ms. Gentry's been an excellent neighbor. I, I appreciate you coming out tonight, and you know, your communication with us so far. Um, she asked about timeline. Um, obviously, we would love for this to already be done. Um, you'll see the next item is a final plat for a few of the lots, but Ms. Gentry, we, if at all possible, rain dependent. We hope to have the big equipment out of there by the end of March. Um, again, we would love for this to already been over, but um, so that, that was the timeline question she had. Um, and then square footage on the properties, um, the majority of these will be three-bedroom homes. Uh, the smallest floor plan we have is a thirteen-hundred-square-foot floor plan. And the intent will be to sell to owner occupants. Obviously, we cannot control that, um, but that is certainly our intent.
Okay, and then she just had a, also a question about sidewalks, but I think we've addressed that pretty well. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, commission, questions, comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve item sixteen, uh, on the agenda of staff comments.
Motion in a second, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighton Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham? Wendy?
You're on mute if you're there, Wendy.
Like myself, she may have been excused for a moment.
All right, um, well, let's go ahead and move on to the, the next item then. Um, this is uh, PL K, uh, twenty-twenty, zero-zero-six-nine-eight. And this is the same property, but the final plat. Uh, Mr. Howell?
Yes, this is uh, the final plat of a portion of the previous case. Um, it includes twenty-one of the uh, sixty-two lots, of the sixty-two residential lots, um, includes two future development lots and one open space lot. Uh, so here you have the final for this, the being phase one of the development, and like I said, it includes the twenty-one lots immediately around that initial entrance off of Judd. Um, it also includes dedicated open space to the, immediately to the north uh, to satisfy open space requirements. And then it includes two future development lots for the cul-de-sac off of Alberta Street, as well as the, the southern um, development that will come off of Dunford and connect into phase one. Staff recommends approval.
All right, this does not require a public hearing, so uh, any questions or comments or motion from the?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, the developer. Uh, are you going to include this graciously and include the sidewalks on Alberta in front of those lots we just talked about in this section?
Yes, sir, so what, what we'll typically do is bond those, um, but they would be a condition of recording this plat. Um, but the, the majority of the sidewalk work would be done as the homes are built. Um, so our, our preference is to do that at that time, but it would be a condition of the final plat recording that we bond that with the city.
Okay, those people that live out there, they've already got an existing home, and I'm sure they'd appreciate it, and it's very gracious of you to do that outside of your property. I'd just like to get it done uh, in this first phase.
Yes, sir, I, I, I certainly understand the question. It may be something where the one extending from Judd, the reason we typically wouldn't is that as we're moving equipment in and out to build those homes, we always destroy it. Um, but there could be a scenario where we could extend it along Judd there, um, out to Richland and uh, on up to Ms. Gentry's property. We just would not um, probably move forward with the, the ADA ramps since there would be no curb to tie to there yet.
Well, we don't wanna put anything in there you're going to destroy, and I'm sure Ms. Gentry have patience with getting it, it'll be a nice addition to their piece of property. In light of that, Mr. Chairman, I didn't, I had a move, we approve item seventeen on the agenda of staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrighton Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to item eighteen, Owens Crossing. Strip Retail Center at Owens Crossing, PL twenty-twenty, zero-zero-seven, zero-one. Um, Mr. Kip?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use approval, or recommend a city council commission approval for a road service use, a fast, well, two fast food restaurants with drive-through. Um, the property owner is Owens Family Partnership LLC, and now represented by Brett Bascom, Foresite Group. The subject property is Zen CDD. Um, to the east, you have uh, what was recently approved Owens Crossing, um, residential with townhomes and single-family homes. Um, everything else kinda at the intersection is commercial, uh, road service uses. The request is before you tonight, because a drive-through is a conditional use in the CED. Um, otherwise, restaurants, uh, retail, things like that are permitted by right. Uh, but the drive-through portion does require conditional use approval. Um, no major issues in the site plan that can't be addressed during DRT. Um, and staff recommends approval. The uh, proposed use and site plan all meet the top plan recommendation. Um, I did receive one correspondence, uh, just wanting to know what uses would be in there. Uh, preferring that they, that a uh, Fazoli's goes in there, was, was the request. Um, happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Mr. Bascom, any comments?
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. This requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, and/or a motion. I would first like to make a comment that, you know, if, if you remember any of my votes with any kind of drive-throughs on anything, I usually say I vote against that, um, cuz I want people out of their cars. This is an appropriate place for a drive-through. You know, and so, for the first time, I'm gonna support this.
Hallelujah.
So is it a Fazoli stuff? Hold on, I know.
Yeah, right, what is it? Well, shoot, I'll even go as far as to make the motion.
I was, yeah, I was about to, I'll second it, Phil.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion.
Get it out first.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-twenty, zero-zero-seven, zero-one Strip Retail Center at Owens Crossing with all staff comments.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in a second, I'll, um, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, on to the last regular item on our agenda, uh, Maddox Lake. Now, this is a waiver to minimum lot size in a planning jurisdiction. Um, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes. So this waiver is coming to you, it is located far outside the city limits uh, in the planning, planning jurisdiction. As you can see in this proximity map, uh, Alabama Highway fifty-one, um, so this is sort of southeast of Beauregard High School. Um, the request is to allow, to reduce the minimum lot size requirement of one acre in the planning jurisdiction to point six acres. Um, this is the lot layout that we received with this waiver application. This has not come to us, um, as you would see it as preliminary plat yet. Um, as you can see, the majority of the proposed lots would be that point six um, reduction, which makes it um, significantly less than what we advised for in the planning jurisdiction. We have not received any comments for this. More than likely because it's so far outside of the city limits and we are recommending denial of this waiver.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me ask a kind of a basic information question. Uh, when we say we have the planning jurisdiction, I, I recall it's a five-mile sort of limit, but where do you, where does the start, starting point go? Is it like a certain center point in Auburn or does, is it measured from?
The furthest extent of the city limits.
So that will change over time, the planning jurisdiction, okay, all right. So there's no public hearing for this, so that's a questions, comments or motion?
Can I ask another, maybe, question? So we talk a lot about bringing land into the city limits as rule and it has a three-acre minimum, but this has a one-acre minimum lot size, so can I just, can someone just explain to me the difference?
Yeah, we recommend the three-acre minimum when the property is in the optimal boundary.
Okay.
And in the planning jurisdiction. And when it's outside of the optimal boundary, but within the planning jurisdiction, it's one acre.
Okay.
I would like to ask a question that I know is not a dumb question. Um, when I, when I pulled this up on Google Maps, it says it's Opelika. And so, uh, it, it obviously doesn't lie within either city, but I guess my question is how, what is their optimal boundary or how does that work in terms of how far it is from our city limits versus how far it is from theirs? Do you know what I mean, Katie? Or whomever on staff?
So, yeah, I'll try to help Katie. The, the, the extent of the planning jurisdiction, uh, they extend outside of the city limits and typically when it's close, the applicant picks which city they go to. If there's a case that it overlasts.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So they could have, theoretically, they could have made a choice, are you saying? I mean, they could have gone to Opelika, not in this case, because it's closest to us, it's in our five-mile limit.
Yeah, I think there, and Warren, you might know, is there planning jurisdiction five or three miles?
No, Opelika reduced theirs to three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But when, when they overlap, we, the law, I think, we split the difference. In other words, if, if it's less than five miles from our city limits to theirs, then we would split the, the difference.
Okay.
Not split the difference, but would it be? I think, is that?
Thank you.
Yeah, interesting.
So.
So do we have a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion. Oh, this was done for a reason and it's been pretty consistently applied from, for years. Uh, I, for a reason. So I uh, make the motion that the request for Madison, Maddox Lake waiver to minimum lot size in the planning jurisdiction be denied.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, well, I have a motion in a second and so um, if you're, a yes vote would be to deny.
I would think so.
Okay, all right, uh, any further questions on the motion? All right, Amber.
Bridges?
No, wait. I'm so sorry. Yes, to deny, to grief.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazinby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
He recused himself.
Okay, sorry. Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now we're on to other business, the annual meeting of the commission to elect officers. Um, okay, so there's three positions. Secretary, the incumbent is Mac Lazinby, vice chairperson incumbent is Nonette Reese and chairperson is Bill Chancellor. Um, I'll take, um, let's look at the secretary nominations first. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to make a comment first.
Sure.
I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to, under the unique challenges that we've had to deal with this year um, with the pandemic and having to meet by, via Zoom, I think that, 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 Phil, the job that you have done has been remarkable and, and I, I, for that reason, I, I would really like to recommend that we don't make any changes to our three officers if, if, if the three of you are willing to continue at least for one more year till we get back into normal meetings and move forward. So I just, for the sake of convenience, I'd like to recommend all three of you to be, um, if you're willing to continue in your roles um, for the, for the next year.
I would second that.
Oh, good, motion in a second. I certainly would be. Uh, Ms. Reese, are you willing?
Of course.
Okay, and then Mac?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm, I am honored because I really enjoy doing this and I thank all of you.
You really have done a good job, Phil.
All right, I love it. Well, thanks, everybody. Thank you there at uh,
Let me say, let me give y'all a little update before we um, adjourn.
Sure.
I was a little too ambitious on thinking I could get the short-term rental staff report to you guys tomorrow. So it will probably be early next week, mid to early next week before I can get that out to you. And um, also Allison and I had a chance to meet yesterday, I believe, to discuss the bond extension um, language in the suburbs. And Allison's gonna come up with some language to present to you guys at the March meeting, but we are going to discuss it um, with y'all at your February packet meeting. I don't think it's enough that more it's a work session, but we'll just set aside some time at packet meeting at the February meeting to talk it over.
That sounds good.
That's all I have.
Hey, um, speaking of S T Rs, um, so we have that uh, addition, the, you know, um, additional meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, I have been sent a, a link to the um, work session that we had after a packet meeting on the fifth of October. I don't know if anybody else is interested in having that, but it's maybe if it's worthwhile to jog your memory on our last discussion, it's worth listening to. I, I listened to it today and, you know, it's, 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 I would say it's worth listening to. So if anybody else is interested, um, well, let me just ask this, are, is everybody interested in having that copy, a, a copy of the recording?
Yeah, just.
Okay. Let me figure out how to, I, what I have is from Greg Nelson, he sent me a link that goes directly to it, it's easy to open up and all that, and let me figure out if I can just forward that to you. Uh, and if I can, I will, uh, if he needs to do something different, because I had to actually put a code in to get, get access to it. Uh, it's like two hundred and thirty meg, so I can't send it an email, but I'll, I'll work with Greg and make sure everybody gets a copy of that.
In addition to that, Phil, I will see about putting that on the short-term rental uh, site that we have on our webpage. And that, put the meeting, we've got the presentation on the website, but I think you're right, having that actual discussion and what was said at the meeting would be a good, it would be a good idea to put that on there as well.
Yeah, can you, well, then instead of me trying to go through all those ropes, why don't you put it on the site and then send us the link to the site?
I can definitely do that.
Okay, that's cool.
Have we been sent, you've advertised for this meeting?
Yes, um, it has been advertised for Planning Commission for your special meeting on the twenty-fifth. It should have run in the paper today. I have not checked in the literature.
Maybe just a copy of that?
Yeah, send that with the link, that'd be great.
Okay, I think that's also on the, on the site.
Okay, is it up on? Okay, okay, never mind then.
I'll send you, when I send you the link, you should be able to see all of that.
All right, that's good. Okay, any other?
Thank you.
Second thoughts? Okay, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity for the next year and we will see you on the twenty-fifth. We stand adjourned.